We're going to go ahead and call the public hearing for June 4, 2013. To order please, roll call.
Johnny Blunt?
Yeah.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Okay, first item on the public hearing is an ordinance to amend Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances relative to park operating hours and to provide for related matters. As we talked about last time when it was introduced, I've got numerous complaints, especially about Clark Park, folks hanging out way later than what they should be, and turns out the operating hours were, I think, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. of the park. So this amendment would actually close all of the parks that are operated by the City of Hammond. Their hours would be dawn to dusk, except for special events like the lighting of Z Mary Park, where folks ride through and that sort of thing, or if the administration gave a permit to use, use it after those hours. If there are any questions, comments, now would be the time.
Mr. President, is there...
Or you can give numbers, dawn to dusk. You could just give us what time is dawn to dusk. How can you...
If you would read the ordinance, it defines dusk and it defines dawn. And I'm not saying that maliciously, I'm just saying the ordinance would actually explain it better than I certainly could. Or maybe Andre could help me out with that.
Dawn to dusk is a term of art, and that's been used in other jurisdictions and ordinances similar to this. And there's actually a website you can go to that will, for your location, will identify the exact time of that. And so for law enforcement, they would be able to articulate what that exact time is. But basically, it's defined, dusk is defined as the time each evening just before daylight ends, specifically between sunset and darkness. But there's an objective website that can identify that.
Okay. So that would mean that in the fall, that the parks could probably close about 6:00 in the evening, or maybe 5:30.
That will change, obviously, as the daylight...
So during that time of the year, it's not just based on hours, but it's actually based on... So the parks would be closing in the fall, or in that time of the year, a lot earlier than they would in summer time.
Any public questions or comments? Hello? I wonder who this could be?
John Bostick, 700 East Iowa. I wanted to thank the council for hearing this today. About eight weeks ago, I was contacted by about 40 residents on Sanders and South Holly who were very concerned because they were having a lot of people in the park after dark. At that time, it was getting dark around 6:00, but people were just sitting in the dark in the park. There are no lights in Clark Park. And they were causing a little bit of mischief in the area and scaring the neighbors. So we kind of... Terry Lynn Smith, our vice president for the Iowa Association, we had a meeting. She contacted Jason about our concerns, and it turned out that there was inconsistencies in the park hours. And so Jason has put forth this, and we were very pleased to support this amendment so that there aren't people just sitting in the dark in the park when they shouldn't be. Thank you.
I have one other question, just, Mr. President, just for clarification. So this would also include Zemory Park, which has lighted tennis courts, it has a skate park, and I just want to make sure that we're all understanding that concept too. So in those cases where, if it's dusk for the whole city, that means that the tennis courts would close as well. So should we look at those particular things that are designed to be utilized after dark in that case, before we vote exclusively on all the parks closing? Or should we consider some of those areas like that that might be designed to be utilized in the evening times as well? Just bring it to the council and consider and think about.
That... Andre, I'm going to lean on you to help me, but I think that would be, to get on the tennis courts, you actually have to go and be let on the court by the recreation department. And if it is a sanctioned event by the recreation department, that affects this change, and it allows for them to be out there. Is that correct?
Yes. But that's just open for public usage. It's not a sanctioned event. It could be regular recreational tennis.
I think the way this would be interpreted is if the city recreation department allows open play during certain times of the night, if you will, when lights are on. That's an approved activity by the city. So long as some, the city gives its authority or approval for an activity, then that would be considered an activity approved by the city.
So can the...
The recreation department has an open tennis night from 6:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. and...
But what do we have now? Does anybody know what we have now? Is there anybody we can find out? Ms. Mayor, you know what the rules are at the tennis courts?
No, sir, I don't.
I think we may get some night...
John Bostick, 700 East Iowa. I coach tennis, and so I work with the recreation department on that. And you cannot be on the courts without a key, and when you go on, you have to lock the court behind you. That's because of damage to the surface. The surface is very expensive, so you have to pick up the key and put down a deposit and return it the same day. So you cannot get on without a reservation and their permission.
So, John, at night, is there, once the recreation department is closed?
You have to go through the city tennis coach. You have to make an appointment with him to get on the courts at night, and it has to be approved by the recreation department.
Somebody's got to cut the lights on.
Yeah. And all of that is locked up. It all has to be undone, so only people sanctioned by the department are allowed to mess with that.
What about the skate parks, if you're out there?
Skate park, I can tell you, the skate park has always been, and I don't know if it's official, but it has always been dawn to dusk, the hours, and there are no lights there. There's no lights.
So, and I'll have to make sure I'm clear, as long as, if it's something sanctioned by the rec center, it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or the city.
Or the city. So if they're on Mooney Park, it's approved for the Mooney Park basketball court to be open for regulated activity? That's okay?
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I don't, to belabor, no one will belabor the point, but I don't think
the intention of this is to go out for the police officer patrol to look for people being out at the park at dusk. But should Mr. Bostick call the police department, technically, the hours right now in Clark Park are from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So they're not violating anything if they're out there after dark. So it's not something...
And they're not lit, so they really shouldn't be out there in the dark.
And like I said, Lisa, I don't think we're going to intentionally go right around, you know, trying to run people out unless there's some issues raised. Okay.
And councilman, it allows a 30-minute gap for folks to leave the park before you're in violation. So if the activity ends at 8:00, really, it's not until 8:30, but usually.
Not, just not to belabor, but just the activity thing, I think, is, you know, because just going to the park, like if you go to Mooney Park and you're just out there playing, it's a lit, it's a, the basketball courts have lights. So it may not be a quote-unquote sanctioned event. It could just be people going out there to play, and with the lights out there, they can actually be up there past, you know, 5:30 during the fall. I don't necessarily know what they're going to be doing will be sanctioned unless we, unless the City of Hammond says that we will always sanction free play at Mooney Park, you know, until whatever time it is. If that's a standing order, you know, I don't think the kids are going to go to the rec center and say, "Hey, I want to play basketball," and get permission to play basketball, then go back out there. They're just going to go out there and play. So, and I think to the president's point, I don't know if the cops are going to just go around and remove people from the park, but for intent purposes, if we pass this ordinance, this resolution, then if there's real for intent purposes, they can, because the park isn't really closed unless, unless, you know, it's a sanctioned event. And I don't know if we just sanction free play on the basketball course in the park, because I think that would be one event that is designed to maybe take place after 5:00, especially when the rec center closes at 4:00 during the week, for the most part.
Well, now until 8:00, probably, you know, during the summer.
Yeah, because the rec center closes, the indoor closes at 4:00, 4:30. So you would have really...
No, I'm talking about the light. I mean, it's still light outside. It gives them more time.
Is that something we can consider, Mr. President? Because maybe somehow figure that in there, where we have areas that are lighted, you know, maybe that needs to... Because it's not necessarily going to be a sanctioned event if you're just in the park. You know, you're not going to go to the rec center and get permission to be in the park after dusk to just play, pick up a pickup game of basketball. I don't know if that's going to necessarily be sanctioned, unless we say that that event is always sanctioned. I'm not sure how we would handle that.
Andre, could we just, could the rec department set hours for lighted facilities within parks and say they close at 9:00 or 10:00? And they will be sanctioned by the rec park if the rec park makes a policy that says any lighted facility that's open normally for free play closes at whatever, 9, 10, whatever?
That'd be considered to be an approved activity. Recreation department sanctions it.
So I don't think we would need to do anything different with this at this point, if the recreation department and administration wanted to do that, take that approach.
Well, if we passed the resolution, then we're telling the administration, this is how we would prefer it be done. So should we amend it, so that we can make sure that that time is allowed?
Andre, what is your opinion of that?
Well, I think that's administrative. You know, certainly you should speak with the recreation director and the folks over there if they're concerned about their hours. Certainly, anything approved by the recreation department or the city, or the council, I'll take it. But it seems to me that you want to give some flexibility. There's obviously some issues of safety and security. You've got to balance those.
So if we set, if we set a firm time, and then after, if there starts being issues after 8:00 p.m., and the council sets that time, then we have to...
Sure.
...come back and change it. Is that right?
Yes. I'd recommend you leave it like it is, and if it gets to be an issue with time, take that up with the recreation department, the mayor, to be sure there's open opportunity for free play if that becomes an issue.
Are there any more public questions or comments on this item? Okay. Let's go to item number two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or the director of administration to accept the donation of a certain parcel of land located at 901 East Park Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, and to sign all documents pertinent thereto under the terms and conditions of the Act of Donation and Addendum thereto. Mayor Foster.
Thank very much, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We were approached by Wells Fargo Bank, who actually acquired the property at 901 East Park Avenue. They are, they are looking for someone to donate the property to. According to the rules of Wells Fargo Bank, and this is what they told me, is that it must be a government body, because I suggested to them that they donate it directly to Habitat for Humanities or someone, some other nonprofit organization, and they indicated that their policy is to donate all of their excess properties to governmental bodies and then let the governmental body handle it. So we passed by 901 East Park the other day. They have, or they are in the process of demolishing the house. We will not accept title until we make sure that the property is free and clear of all encumbrances and free and clear of all environmental concerns. As I mentioned, when it was introduced, we do have every intention of, as soon as we acquire the property, to come back to the council, request that the council declare the property surplus, and let's put this property back into, into an economic value.
Okay. Any questions? Any public questions or comments on this item? Okay. Here and then we'll move right into our regular scheduled meeting for June 4, 2013. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Mr. Blunt, are you here?
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Yeah.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Mr. Vick, would you be so kind as to lead us in prayer, please?
Before we begin our formal prayer, I would ask that you, we all spend a few moments silence and private contemplation for two heroes of a certain different stripe who have passed away. First is Mr. Howard Evans. He was the first president to keep having a beautiful committee, and he was a moving force behind keeping our city really clean. I consider him a hero because he was frequently out on the streets by himself with his straw hat and his pickup stick, and he delivered, to my knowledge, Mr. Clean-up Day. So let's give a few moments of thought to the memory of Howard Evans and his widow. The second individual I want to bring to mind tonight is Specialist Chris Drake, who lost his life in Afghanistan, or we could go Sunday. His body was brought back to Hammond today. It was a highly emotional moment, and it was amazing the support from the community. Practically the whole route from Hammond to Dillon Springs, where the body was taken to temporary arrangements. There's lines of people waving flags. His mother is in deep, deep griefs, Ohio, as she prayed for her and for his memory and in thanksgiving to the sacrifice that he made. Oh God, we turn our attention to you and the knowledge of day is loss in life, and we have to accept that loss as part of our journey to eventual salvation and happiness with you for all eternity. While it's difficult to accept, we thank and appreciate those who give of their lives for their country and their community. And we pray in thanksgiving to this great community, these good people here in Hammond, who seem to want to strive to make ours another place despite some of the challenges that we face in everyday life. We thank you for those who agreed to serve and run for elective office, and who are entrusted with keeping our city running, with the answer to giving wisdom to the grace of the Holy Spirit so that they make the right decisions, and that they do it with a sense of harmony and peace. We thank you for all the things that you give us in life, especially for this freedom that we enjoy in our country. We thank you for those such as Special as Drake, who made the ultimate sacrifice so that we can continue to enjoy this great life that we do in the United States. We pray that all the men and women defending our country come home to their loved ones, alive, vibrant, ready to take their part in our society. We pray all these things you may be wanting to say.
Mr. Williams, could you lead us in prayers, please?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, do we have any council reports? Okay. I have a very brief one. I normally don't talk about it, but I wanted to let the public know, and I saw Mr. Benitez here. We, the last two weekends out at Chappaheila Sports Park has hosted two baseball tournaments. The first weekend, we had 59 teams in town, of which six were from local, and last weekend were 68 teams of six, which were local teams. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, as we get our sales tax collection reports from the mayor, hopefully, we can see some numbers increase on that even more than what they've been doing. We're trying to do our part, and I wanted to let you guys know and keep you informed as you voted for it and to support it. And we also wanted it to be not just a place to play, for kids, for players, to play sports, but to be an economic engine for our city and our parish. So we're trying to do our part, and we do have another tournament this weekend that was, at last time I checked, was at 60 teams, and of which only about five are local. So we feel like we're bringing some dollars in, so I wanted to pass that along to you. Mayor, do you have the report, sir?
Yes, sir. Let me echo the words that Mr. Couvion just stated about Chris Drake. I was there with Mr. Pena Pinto and Jason Ball, and I can tell you, as they took that young man off of the airplane, there was not a dry eye anywhere. And it was very moving as the procession came into town. It was like Mardi Gras downtown. And so I also want to thank the citizens of Tanschmo Parish that have shown such devotion to Christopher Drake, and his funeral will be Monday, and he will be laid to rest in Holly Garden Cemetery. So I'm sure that we'll also see the same support on Monday that we saw today. Sales tax, Mr. President, thank you so much for bringing all of those teams in, because they're doing a very good job of increasing our sales taxes. We did receive 1.5 million, million dollars in sales tax collections, which was up 8.13% from last year. So they are still doing very well. Someone asked me, what are we doing with all of that sales tax money? And I think that if you look at the budget for 2013, 2014, if you look under the sales tax fund, you can see that we will show a surplus, a beginning surplus, in the sales tax fund of about $800,000. And it's anticipated that that sales tax fund will be used for funding the 2013, 2014 fiscal year. Cleanest City, we will have a Cleanest City award ceremony tomorrow morning here in the council chambers at 9:00 a.m. But we're not going to just stop with the designation of Cleanest City. We also have a cleanup day on Saturday, June 15th, beginning at Schwagman's. Is that right, Mr. Vick?
Yes.
You twisted my arm to be sure to announce that one. Also want to announce that the City of Hammond is going to partner with North Oaks Health Systems, because June is Men's Health Month. Nothing against the ladies in the audience, but we will have a seminar on June 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Michael J. Kenny Center focused on men's health. We will have urologists and other types of men's doctors there. So that should be really interesting, and you can come with your questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any new businesses in the audience that'd like to be recognized? Okay. Approval of amendments.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, there are no old resolutions of new business. Number one, a resolution for the police department to purchase synergy consoles from Watson Furniture Group through Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office for new police building, bid number 12F1101, cost $44,333.80. Mr. Peters?
This is furniture for the new police building there, that they're, they're renovating now. So therefore, we, we got the bid, and we piggyback off the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office bid. So therefore, we got that console to come to the council for purchase approval at 44,333.80.
Mr. President, if you may. Yes, sir.
Mr. Peters, let's also point out, this is just, this is more than just furniture.
Right, you had said furniture. Yeah.
The current console in the police department here is over 25 years old, and this will put us right in line with what's going on throughout the parish as well. Let's be sure the public understands that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This console, I'm assuming, is kind of like a switchboard type deal?
Exactly.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Any public questions or comments? It's a pleasure.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to purchase, ratify, and award bids received on on-site hypochlorite generator system for the sewer treatment facility, Project RFP number 13-31. Bid, bid closed 5/29/2013, bid awarded to Process Solutions Incorporated, an amount of $304,000 purchase price, option to lease, $313,046.75. Mr. Mike, good afternoon.
How you doing?
Yes, sir.
This is a disinfectant system that will be replacing our current disinfectant system at wastewater plant where that, that oval system's outdated and needs to be replaced. The company that we purchased it from is no longer in business, and we need to, and we're having a hard time staying in compliance with our current system. And we, we're wishing, requesting that we go with the three-year lease purchase of this rather than the outright purchase, which would be the $313,046.75 over three years.
That's the total price for the three years, so it's basically $100 and some odd thousand dollars.
Right, that's, I have the breakdown.
I want to make sure everybody...
That's the lease to own?
Yeah, the, per year will be $107,239.05. And we can either opt to pay it annually, or every six months, however you want to pay it, but we want, we'd like to go with the lease option.
Okay.
And this system will, this system will use our existing tanks and stuff that, you know, retrofit to our existing stuff, so we didn't have to purchase all new equipment. It'll retrofit our existing system.
Okay. I think Mr. Councilman Marshall had a question.
I have a question.
No, sir, you're good?
No, I'm good.
Oh, I have one. Yes, will this pertain to the treatment on Natchez?
That, yeah, it's, yeah, we only have one treatment plant, that is Natchez. Yeah.
All right. This would help eliminate some of that odor?
No, this has nothing to do with the odor. This is only for disinfecting the sewer once it leaves the plant going to the swamp. It kills the bacteria leaving the plant as per required by our permit. We are working on that, that problem, too.
What are you doing? Because this morning was very, very noticeable.
We're, we've got a company doing some sampling at a bunch of our lift stations to try to come up, and actually, he's through sampling, and he's working up the report and make some recommendations. Should be getting it within the next week or so, maybe two weeks. What, kind of what we're looking at doing, we checked all of our main stations to see what our dissolved oxygen was. Dissolved oxygen is the key to all of that. Chuck, jump in, if I may. If you don't have enough oxygen leaving your lift stations, then your sewer goes septic, which causes the odor problem at the plant. And he's studying all of our lift stations that come straight to the plant, determine which ones are low on oxygen, and what we can do to resolve the dissolved oxygen problem, which in turn will help solve the odor problem. So he's been working on this for a couple of months and taking a lot of samples, doing a lot of... And one thing that we're looking at possibly doing is putting some extra air in the water at the lift stations coming to, straight to the plant. And, but that's all I want to say right now until he gives us his recommendation.
So, Mr. Gary, on the option of lease, do we own it then to lease?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we own it then to lease. I like the lease where if you're running any problems, you got a little bit of...
I understand. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
And that's for the lease option, my counsel?
Second. Motion to approve the lease option.
That's correct.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Number three, a resolution accepting the reappointment of Eartha Cross to the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a term expiring July 29, 2016. Ms. Cross has been nominated by John Crane, president of Southeastern Louisiana University. Mayor Foster.
Mr. President, to the council and to the public, the next five items are appointments. Four are reappointments. One is an appointment, and the lady for the appointment is here tonight. This particular one is a reappointment of Ms. Eartha Cross to the Civil Service Board. She has agreed to serve.
Motion to approve.
She's not here.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Number six, a resolution accepting the appointment of Eva Felder to the Hammond Housing Authority for a term expiring May 31, 2016, after which she would be eligible for another five-year term if she does a good job. Eva, would you introduce yourself to the council, please?
Hi, my name is Eva Felder. I have been a lifelong resident of the city of Hammond. I have been in the banking industry for 24 years, and I'm looking forward to the appointment and serving.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your agreeing to serve.
So move. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Jimmy Meyer to the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire June 30, 2015. Mayor Foster.
Council may recall that we did approve two appointments, or reappointments, at the last council meeting. Was it three? And Jimmy Meyer has served as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustments for a number of years. He does an excellent job, and I would like to place his name in renomination, nomination for reappointment.
I have a question on that, Mr. Mayor. I had someone ask me today that the terms, the term for this appointment was at one time, four years, and then it changed to two. Can you just tell me?
Yes. Actually, I think the term of appointments are five years. But rather than reappointing all of these gentlemen for the five-year term, I'm asking that the council approve the term through June 30, 2015. That's two years from now, and that would give the new administration and the new council, whoever that is, an opportunity to review these appointments should they desire to make a change.
Satisfied?
I mean, I just wanted to ask the question.
What's the, pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Hammond Daily Star on behalf of the city of Hammond, and to set as the official journal for the fiscal year July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. Mr. Peters.
We bring it here every year, the Hammond Daily Star, the only paper in the parish. So therefore, we bring it to the council for approval, authorizing, allowing mayor to enter a contract for that purpose, as our official journal.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Number nine, a resolution to reject the bids opened on May 23, 2013, to construct the airport traffic control tower because the city of Hammond does not have funds sufficient for the construction of the proposed work, and no bids were submitted within the established threshold of the pre-construction estimates, which was between $1 million and $1.3 million as stated in the bid specifications. Mr. Ball?
Good evening, council. As you know, we had three bids submitted, of the lowest being 1.778 million, and the highest being 2.07 million, which is extremely over our budget that we, we had estimated, and, well, our estimate was 1.3 million, which we felt was a very accurate estimate for the construction, and then also what our budget would allow, being that it was incredibly over budget. We've employed our design engineers to go back to the design, but to do that, we have to reject these bids. This will allow us to go back, simplify the design by, and not to go into detail, but take some things out that we were planning for expansion. We were putting in like some electrical for the elevator, which was not part of the base bid. So if we can take out some of these things, which we've already done in part to save, some of it was $50,000, just changing from drilled pylons, I mean, from the two drilled pylons, from the driven pylons, saved about $50,000. So we're cutting some costs in certain areas, and if we feel that when we rebid this project, we will get closer to our budget, we feel pretty confident that we can hit that number.
Any questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public?
I'll make a motion to reject the bids opened on May 23, 2013.
Chuck?
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number ten, a resolution to purchase two each Ford F-250 pickups from Hickson Auto Place, state contract number 439388, line number 116, $23,318 each, total $46,636 for the street department. Mr. Peters.
We bring these to the council for approval, so therefore, being that it's in excess of $25,000, they're on state contract, Hickson Auto Place, so therefore, we bring it to, for approval, so that we can purchase these vehicles for our street department.
Mr. Ernest, I understand we bought it on state contract. Do we give our local Ford dealer a chance to match this price?
No. We brought it, just bought it on state contract. Our Ford dealer apparently bid it with the state and did not receive the warrant.
So they can't bid, they, there's not a bid process that allows our local dealers to bid for the contract?
If we had bid these, and we're trying to buy them out of this fiscal year, we would not have time, had time to close the bid. Due to time constraints, we bought off state contract, which allowed us to cut a purchase order in and buy it out of this year's budget.
There's nothing that the council can do to expedite that process, to allow, allow our local dealers to bid on that business?
Timeline was involved.
I mean...
June 30 is our closing, is the close of our fiscal year. So we have to have bids in prior to that. If we put them out too close, too close to the end of the year, they won't have time to close.
Is it possible to encumber those funds so they would be there for the next fiscal year?
No, because they're operating funds.
Okay.
They're not out of a fund. They're operating money.
Gotcha. Okay.
I guess my question, which I don't know if you understand my answer, is, I understand about the bid.
Right.
Could you, if our local Ford dealer could match that price, then could you purchase it from him? Or that dealership? And was he given an opportunity? Was he at least asked?
No.
I would, well, then I would like him to be asked, or that dealer.
Can that be done?
I'm afraid we might go, we can't go outside with the law requires in terms of bidding process. You can't just pick...
I know.
On state contract?
Well, on state contract, you can't, oh, yeah, state contract.
That's all I'm asking, is for the local vendor to have an opportunity to match. He may not. He may say he can't match the price, and that's fine.
I would need to, I would need to...
Need?
Chuck probably knows better than I do, but we just want to be sure that that's...
They do have options to match. They don't typically match. This is something they bid statewide, and the price is pretty good.
I understand.
Have they had two vehicles in them, or did they...
I'm with Councilman Williams on that. I think we need to, we need to explore that, explore that option as much as possible to get that done.
What, next meeting, by next meeting, Mr. Ernest, would that be feasible to do by next meeting?
That would be feasible.
And if they're not able to, we will still have time to act on this?
We will still have time.
Okay. All right, well, let's, how about make a motion, someone, if they're interested, make a motion to table this item.
I'll make a motion to table. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
Okay. Final adoption of ordinance.
Mr. President, we got an amendment.
Oh, that's right, there is an amendment.
Yes, sure. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to be item number 11, resolution to approve change of order in capital improvements, 2012, 2013, FYI, 2013, reducing project number 420-11309, North Oak Street improvements in an amount of $80,000, and adding the same amount to project number 42011208, drainage improvements in an amount of $80,000, and authorize additional amount to the contract of Richard Price Construction. Chuck Spang.
Second. And then Hood.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried to amend the agenda.
What you have is actually a budget change form, and I'll briefly tell you what we do with that. A lot of you remember, but if you amend a project within a fund, a 420 fund, and you're not moving it out of one fund to another, it's a resolution, it's a budget amendment. And if you look at this sheet that I hope you have, I apologize, I didn't email it to Whitney, I have a little computer issues today. And the mayor said he'd make copies, and Whitney there, thank you. So I'm sorry I didn't get this emailed to anybody, but, the drainage project, if you've read the paper in the last couple of days, you've heard it, there's a bit of consternation in Villawest over the scope of the work that's been done in the original drainage contract, which is the first contract on this line, 2013, 420-11208. We bid the job, if you recall, early in the fall, and it was $400,000 to do the lining work. We shrunk the scope of the project, rebid it, and we came in budget. I did a poor job of communicating the scope of the shrunk work. I don't know if that's the right term, shrunken work, amended work. The plans are in the council office, they're in the mayor's office, I have plans, my people have plans, contractors' plans, but there was a lot of surprise people when the work we were doing on the rucanes did not go as far north as they thought. We started the downstream in, we did the first two blocks, but we did not do the third or the fourth block of rucanes. And the mayor and I and Sada met this morning, and they're trying to find out how we can expand the work beyond the point where it now stops on rucanes. I'm telling you a lot of information you probably don't want to know, I just want to make sure you understand what happened. And it just so happens, we just recently bid the North Oak Street job, and we were about $80,000 under. So my recommendation to the mayor and to Sada, and the mayor has concurred with that recommendation, would be to take that under run on North Oak and place it into the drainage project to expand the work north. We have three or four pretty bad spots on rucanes. And I'm saying spots, holes is big around four feet deep, where the drainage cavities, that we just didn't have money originally to get to. And as I said, I apologize, I didn't tell everybody in advance, and the councilman Marshall didn't know, the mayor didn't know, that we were stopping at a certain point. And everybody was surprised when the lining got finished and the work, that some of this other work went done. So we are recommending that we expand the work all the way to Rouenay. It's about 656 feet, not all of which will be lined, but a lot of it will be lined, the worst part will be lined. There's about 200 really bad feet, and we're going a little bit more than that each way, and putting in a catch base and some other things. So the work is right at $80,000. What I would like you to do, if it's possible, is approve budget change form 1304, which gives us the funds to do that additional work, and we will authorize the contractor to remobilize his lining subcontractor and come back in there and do that work. Now, the rest of the Villawest work is done, the Woodbridge work is done, and this is just an addition to that. So that's the nature of the budget change form, if anybody has any questions.
I have one question, Chuck.
Sir?
Wait, I'm glad to hear this. I didn't know this was, we were going to talk about this tonight, but that's, that's great news, and I'm sure the citizens on Rucane are going to be very happy, and I appreciate you and the mayor for getting that done. When we finish the project, you know, obviously, those holes, especially on, at 1005 Rucane, I think Councilman Martin saw it as well, and the mayor knows what I'm talking about. Will we be making repairs to the street as well?
And the, and the catch base, and the hole around the catch base. It'll all be backfilled with global fill and finished off clean, with the top 12 inches, if it's on the grass side, will be topsoil and sod. The street side will be paved right up to the surface. So yes, they will be.
Like I said, just again, I appreciate...
Take away that hazard.
...the effort to get this done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chuck, for getting that done.
Okay. Questions? Mr. President?
Motion to approve.
Second. Vote, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Final adoption of ordinance. Number one, final adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances relative to park operating hours and to provide for related changes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor or the director of administration to accept the donation of a certain parcel of land located at 901 East Park Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, and to sign all documents pertinent to thereto under
So that's the nature of the budget change form, if anybody has any questions.
I have one question, Chuck. I'm glad to hear this, I didn't know this was, we were going to talk about this tonight, but that's, that's great news, and I'm sure the citizens on Ruqan are going to be very happy, and I appreciate you and the mayor for getting that done. When we finish the project, you know, obviously, those holes, especially on, at 1005 Ruqan, I think Councilman Martin saw it as well, and the mayor knows what I'm talking about. Will we be making repairs to the street as well?
And the con, and the catch base, and the hole around catch base. It'll all be backfill with global fill and finished off clean, with the top 12 inches, if it's on the grass side, will be topsoil and sod. The street side will be paved right up to the surface. So yes, they will be.
Like I said, just again, I appreciate.
Take away that hazard.
The effort to get this done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chuck, for, for getting that done.
Okay. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Vote, please.
Johnny Blunt? Jason Hood? Bobby Martin? Lamar Marshall? Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Okay, final adoption of ordinance. Number one, final adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances relative to park operating hours and to provide for related charges.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt? Jason Hood? Bobby Martin? Lamar Marshall? Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor or the director of administration to accept the donation of a certain parcel of land located at 901 East Park Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, and to sign all documents pertinent to thereto under the terms and conditions of the Act of Donation and Addendum thereto.
So move. Second.
Johnny Blunt? Jason Hood? Bobby Martin? Lamar Marshall? Mike Williams? Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance and set a public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance for donation of surplus vehicle to be given to the marshal's office for serving of truancy paper for the Tansho Parish School System. One, 2003 Dodge Durango, VIN number 1D4H-R38N43F550266A, as in Apple, unit number 559. Mr. Peters.
This is a unit that is going in, that is in surplus, and the marshal's office contacted the mayor and, and referenced if they could utilize it in working with the Tansho Parish School System in reference to truancy. So therefore, we need to bring it to the council so that it can be introduced for a public hearing as to making this donation. So we bring it to the council.
Let me, let me just say that that's going to be pursuant to a cooperative endeavor agreement with the marshal's office. Generally, we can't donate property, but that'll be pursuant to cooperative endeavor agreement with the marshal's office.
Thank you.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Johnny Blunt? Jason Hood? Bobby Martin? Lamar Marshall? Mike Williams? Motion to introduce approved, public hearing set for June 18, 2013.
Do we have motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Johnny Blunt, second to that motion to adjourn.